Counselor, the next item on the agenda is Allen in the library. Welcome.
There's an upgrade here. Budget increase is 2%. The professional services toll is 2% increase. That's fact of obligations raises for the staff. There's an increase in Old Collin Library Network line. That's our KSBR membership with the Old Collin Library Network. And that's our annual assessment established by network in Europe. The insurance line is very small.
Motion to approve.
We're going to spare you a lot of time this evening. I would like to make a comment there. No, I just have to, again, I'm struggling with names now, but the presence, the real level of cooperation, and I'm sure nobody's probably even aware of this, but the level of cooperation you've supplied to Department of Mental Health in working as a resource for people with serious mental illness in and around Quincy, as a resource for redirecting people to appropriate settings where they can get assistance or help, is absolutely commendable. And at some point, I'd like to bring you back before I go to actually commit the work that you do, because what it really does is reinforce the whole concept of library as a very public space for everyone. And that is there to really meet the needs in new ways, even as time goes on. So I just really wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you and to commend you and that key on the gentleman's name, I wish I had it here.
Thinking of my assistant director Clayton Sheater?
Clayton, that's it, yes. Just fantastic, fantastic work that he's done in relation to that. And, you know, in terms of tying together the resources for people, and it doesn't cost anything, but it does direct people, or we can say redirect people in things, services, and things that they might have. So thank you very much for that great work.
Thank you, Counselor. Excuse me, Counselor Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Being gracious, obviously having before us, the library is probably one of his favorite department. The work that you do is tremendous, and you know, the services you provide, Fire X C was shown before us in this budget. And I know that each of us have received your annual report, and it's tremendous, the outreach that you have, the services that are available, both in-house, at the branches, and online. I know I have the pleasure of actually constantly being a servant of Strategic Planning Committee a second time for me. I'm very impressed with your staff and the relationships that you build. I think that the friends of the library should be, not only the library's acumen, but those friends of the library, the way they step up and, you know, what they're able to provide you off-budget, that they're able to provide to us underneath. And then it's the library trust as well. You really have a great team that you lead, and your efforts absolutely are commendable. And I'm grateful for your service and service of your staff. So I just wanted to share that, how much that you're able to provide. And then we're looking at the maintenance repair line, how some of the characters were talking about it. And I'm really pleased to see that we have a level plan, we have products that you and I have talked about for years, because as you did up here years past, you know, here we are saying, you know, basically level funding, level funding, charge no raise, and the same old for library budget. And we see so much more being provided out of use from those dollars. The Adam Short slated to get some new, the long broken AC repair, you know, and I think there's some good capital expenditures that we'll be reviewing as well of other branches in the main library. So I'm pleased to see you've been on the waiting list for a very long time. And so I just wanted to give you an opportunity to mention that, you know, kind of projects that will have you up to continue to accommodate for nine minutes, wasn't that one? But, you know, it is a big part of the buildings that we're responsible for, keeping them in shape. Tonight we're really talking about, you know, just operations. So you should run this job with what you do, the ability you have, and I just believe we're giving the library more money. I will say on the revenue line, I noticed that library fines are down, and that's a good thing. I think you've done some great programs with the industry, because trust we don't want your library fines related book, we want you utilizing and being a part of the library culture. So great job to you, to your staff, all the programs that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm totally go around, you know, a while. I mean, you know, I'm, these days, I'm taking in a library experience from a different lens. You know, my early, I guess adult would utilize the library if I was studying for, you know, advanced certification in my day job, but, you know, through the grace of God, I'm seeing it now through an 18, 19, 20-month-year-old child. And what an experience it is in that children, I mean, my son is, he's very into books, so hopefully that pattern continues. But just, I was blown away when I walked in there, just the amount of activity and thank God I wasn't there for it, but my wife sent me a video to get the cap and the hat, and then to come in for the children room. And, you know, just the library being an opportunity, not only, you know, maybe further education, but, you know, as a young family, it's just an opportunity to create lasting memories. So that's kind of where I'm at, looking at it from a different perspective now as a young parent. But, yeah, just the environment and positivity is radiant in that. So I just wanted to kind of point that out, because it's certainly, you know, it's been special to me and my family, so thank you.
Thank you. It's a busy place, we're there for everybody, zero to never.
Any further dialogue for Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to sound like a broken record and echo everyone's sense, because I think we're all incredibly grateful for the work that you and your staff do. I wanted this moment ago to touch on how you guys are creative with your programs and inclusive of everyone in the community, and just give a little plug for a recognition program you guys have in two weeks, on the 23rd, it's a literacy recognition, for not just the folks that had attended the class, but for the volunteers as well. So I think it's going to be a good night and a perfect example of the kind of work that you do that isn't just in the library, but, you know, how you're creative and fundraising, and how you can sort of expand your outreach to the community. So I hope I'm looking at it and leaving a note.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion made by, oh, Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues as well. Not only just for the main branch, I also go into the Adam Short branch, which is very, very nice, nice children's section there. It's more convenient to get locked down to it, so I also use the children's section quite a bit. I bring my kids in there, and there's a lot of different activities that you have, very important, and they like to go into the sections of the library, which you do a great job with, not only just books, you also do, you know, the rentals of DVDs and tapes and other things that you get for audio, which is a huge thing. So I want to say you guys are doing a great job over there. I see a lot of these rolling around. And just continue to do all the hard work, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Any further dialogue from Ms. Allen? Seeing that Counselor Finn has made a motion to move approval, not a card, if you please call her off.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeann.
Yes.
Chairman Cole.
Yes, he remembers ordering an affirmative. Yeah, thank you for joining us here this evening. About the great work that you did.
Thank you very much for your support in the house and seeing what the library is.
The next item on the agenda is the health commissioner, Mr. Andrew Ruler Shealy.
Pleasure to be here. It's nice to see you this way, because I always was the one who was coming up and sharing the old table in pretty down. I don't want to be coming up here, because this is a little bit heavier than what I was. My budget's basically the exact same budget as last year. We do have one line item that was increased, and that was our professional and technical. And my office is coming in to the technical age. We are going to be using View Fermat. It's the exact same program that Mr. Duka uses down in special services. So the $25,000 increases for that, I do $15,000 of it is for user fees and internet access for wireless devices, and another $10,000 is for equipment, so we can get up and running.
Thank you. Oh, you'll be going up.
You'll be going up.
You're good, you're good, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Shealy. Because I just wanted to take this time to thank you personally. I've had a lot of calls, not a lot I know who speaks, and we had a lecture about our broken problem in the city and how we've been seeing a decrease in that. And I want to thank you and work with your department for that. You are on top of every single call at a moment's notice, and I've had neighbors and constituents call with issues, and you, well, they're amazed at the fact that you are there on Sunday, on Monday.
I have a great staff, I really do.
Well, it shows, and the work, the work is incredible. So I want to thank you and your team. I'll make a motion to approve. If others want to speak, that's fine, I just, I want to thank you and your team. You do a great job down there, and really, you go beyond, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. As a motion to approve, Counsel Kane on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to also thank you, because we, I'm glad to know, to read the ledger that the epidemic has passed, which is...
I would not say passed, we're always out there working on it.
Well, you should talk to Mr. Carter.
You never know.
He was selling some papers this weekend because of us, but...
Time for retreat.
But I totally, I totally am grateful for all the work that you've done. We've been working together, but we get a ton of calls down in the library, and I know that people want to see this resolved. And I just want to sort of ask on a go-forward basis, you know, please just reiterate for us, or let us know, how are we going to, you know, is there any way really to globally combat this situation, or do we still need to sort of...
Stay, of course, and I think including the education, as far as when we get to a house where we see an issue, we want to educate the residents of that place, you know, this is what attracts them, this is what you can do to lessen the attractiveness of your property, and if you find borrowers real big.
Very dumb. In terms of letting fines or sort of that type of thing, is that something that you guys would be giving me, the power to me, or will that still be...
I don't let any fines through my office. Mr. Duka let his fines through his office, through COVID-19 office, like...
That's something we should look into? Because you're acting, sight unseen at the same time instead of...
Well, I think it's kind of, I'd hate to let you define on a 75-year-old woman who happens to feed the birds, and for some reason, there was a neighbor that might have had a rat or whatever, now they want her property through, maybe no fault of her own, maybe she was feeding the birds, or some of the bird seed fell down and became a food source. So I think the education piece is more important than the finding piece, because I truly don't believe anybody wants rats on their property, so once we go there and we identify it, they really work with us to eliminate the problem. So I'm not inclined to do fines myself.
Okay.
I mean, for some things, I think they work and they grab attention, but for something that people don't want to begin with, I think that's kind of...
But when you see something, you're recording with Jay.
Oh, yeah.
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Kane, Counsel Forrest, and then Counsel DeBona.
Thank you, Chairman Cole. Sure, great to see you. I agree with the person. I would say I think all my round calls come in at 5:00 on Friday. 5:00 on Friday, you answer your phone and you take care of it. I do have to say shout out and kudos, very creative. He raced in the Elton Hymn Derby for House Life Troop Six, and he raced the Rat Mobile, and the prize was most creative. So I appreciate your sense of humor, I will say. That was, you know, great to see you, that supporting that event, great, great sense of humor, but it...
It was a great effect on that.
It was, but your responsibility is...
I was impressed with how big it was.
It's good, we always have a time, I was like, we just, we know for, right? So the other issue, particularly for me, it's great to hear that you're getting on board, and you're quite in the system. Inspection Services did, you know, so many calls that I have between you and Jay, and it's a matter of, you know, sometimes you're able to get into the door when Inspection Services doesn't have access, so in particular, a lot of blighted issues. Your department has been tremendous in some of the cases where, you know, it's a blighted property, but with this, every blighted property, as you know, has a story, you know, a lot of mental health issues come along, and some of the living conditions absolutely deplorable. And I'm really truly grateful to your Jones and your staff and the work that they do, and, you know, how they're able to work with some of our homeowners in their most, you know, real times of need, and work us through these issues, so we're understanding the whole picture. But I think it's very important to have you on, so that you're seeing what Jay's seeing as far as what the property is, because I find often times you've got a puzzle piece that he needs, so I'm really glad to support that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did you beat me in any heat skil? I...
No, I didn't beat you in a single piece either.
I got third place.
Did you really?
I beat you in fifth.
Oh, I took a fifth place, that's okay. I have the library machine.
I came in third, and then you won by eight.
I started off pretty good. So I'm glad we had some nice races over there. It's a great event, I'm glad to enjoy it down there, the Troop Six and everybody, the adult high one there, they run a great event down there. I just want to say that I'm not a ward counselor on that larger, but I do get a lot of great feedback from you throughout the city of quiz, through email or saying that, you know, I had a little of a rat problem, but I'll tell you, when Drew came out, he made me feel very, very pleasant of a bad situation. So, you know, it's all across the city, you've been doing a great job. I want to just echo the sentiments of the colleagues as well. Just the past year, seeing you out there, educating the public, the community, throughout the city, giving handouts, and I think it really, really helped as well as, do you think the infrastructure, remember we were starting to, we're building, we're building, is that part of the rat infestation, I guess, besides the food source?
Absolutely.
Do you think, do you think right now we've kind of got to the point where we've kind of got into the infrastructure, but...
I think we've leveled off, and I do believe that as we go forward, we'll continue to get calls, especially as new projects pop up, but as long as people know what to do when they do identify rats or they do see borrowers, I think we can get on top of it and stop if you want to make a payment.
Sure. So on your calls right now, approximation, what percentage are you kind of at right now compared to maybe last year or the last few months?
After this week's article in the papers last year, which I actually spoke with earlier, we had, I believe, even four calls saying rats.
Okay.
So that's down from previous articles, that we might get 15 or 20 today.
Wow.
We're going in the right direction, I think.
So it's basically, it comes down to the food source, is that number one ingredient?
Source, water, food spray. And one of the three will eliminate rats.
Does it have anything to do with all the rain we've had in the last few days?
No.
No? No, just...
The rain will be a food source coming down the road, if you have a tiger in your backyard, or anything that can hold water, that comes as a food source. And we're coming into the mosquito season, so on top of that, anything that holds water now will come to breed around from the mosquitoes too, so we'll be getting our PSAs out there from mosquito control. I've already spoken with Commissioner Remedy. We will be servicing all of the storm drains this year, as we did last year, so that we still have the lava, so that the mosquito won't be able to breed in the storm drains as they did. We just started doing that again last year, and it really, really reduced the number of mosquito calls that we got for spring, for the mosquito and for...
Anything going on with the other animals that are maybe have a little appetite for the rats, maybe the coyotes, the rat homes? Is there anything else that could be a contributing factor?
This is their natural environment, this is their natural home, this is where they live. So they're always going to be here, all we can do is try to, you know, continually beat them back to where they're in their natural environment, in the marshes, you know, where they're supposed to be, not in the downtown area.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, group.
Motion made by Counsel Hughes, a further discussion?
Again, before we take the vote, just want to echo your expedient service. So thanks, Drew, for everything you do, but that, not a card, if you please call her off.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeann.
Yes.
Chairman Cole.
Yes, the members going in the firm. Thanks again.
I'd just like to say, Counsel Finn, I, hopefully I'm never going to be up here again while you're here. It really was a pleasant work with you, and everything you did, and always treated the health department really, really well, and we appreciate your service. Thank you very much. Respect.
Next item on the agenda is George Nicholson from Veteran Services, welcome in.
See the proposals for level funding again of my budget, which I would be very happy with. I would say that based on the conversation they had with Counsel Finn last year, I was able to implement some changes and do some better observations of the office operation. And that predicted that I would have a busier office this year than we had last year. And not knowing by how much, but I underestimated my own prediction. Started keeping track of people as they come in, phone calls, the regulars, particularly the new ones. My office over this past year, year-to-date, we've had over 1,800 people come to the door of the office, three times that on my phone. And over 500 are new clients with new issues, both for us and for the, for the federal benefits that we go after as well. And I'm anticipating that by the end of the year, I'm only at about 70% right now of the projected budget that I have for the year. Part of that is based on the problem we, it's not just us, every veteran service officer in state is dealing with a new slate of authorizers for all our requests for funding. And now that the new officers, authorizers have some more technical computer programs available to them, they can now look back and just virtually all the records that the VSOs have sent in. And for some reason, they decided that they needed to go back and review every credit from the last five to six years. So we've got appropriations in, the authorizers are looking at them, reducing the requests that we've asked for payment until they get clarification, what happened to this bank of compliments of existence, buying or selling, things like that. We have to go out, get that information, and then they readjust. That's happening now. So we'll come pretty close to a projection by the end of the year. I'll take any questions that you guys have.
Thanks, George. Counsel Finn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. From what you're saying, George, in terms of the veterans' benefit, it's just again for everybody here, the match that we get back from this date is...
Still 75%.
Except 5%, right? So there's a kind of revenue maximization thing that can go on here for the benefit of the city, but it sounds like you're saying, because with the actuals that we have, you have about close to half a million that's still in that, but it sounds like what you're saying is that a lot of these things are being processed presently that are not being counted as in conferences.
Even with the status as it is now, we're running roughly, in terms of just veteran services, around $100,000 a month, a little over. So we will do that plus, regarding associations.
Well, congratulations. I think it's fantastic, because again, you're reaching out to veterans that are in need with that, it's fantastic.
It's been amazing to me, it's, I'm thrilled to be here, to put me in the job of being a veteran, using my experience, and it's paying off, they're coming out of the woodwork where the mouth is spreading by reach and bounds, and I got a great staff working for me. It's really tough, because you're going to lose my job Friday before the year's over, fair there, 25 years.
One thing is, is that you've put in some level funding, which I will support for that, because again, the last thing I want to see is, is those dollars, you know, going back into the general fund at this point, because again, one, we don't get the match, and secondly, it means those aren't the dollars, those dollars aren't necessarily going into veteran services. So I think the one thing I would say is that I'm very concerned about the future, obviously. I think you're going to feel more pressure. And even if that, even if you hadn't made this mark, or at least that you weren't up here saying that that's, that you're going to make that mark, I wouldn't be cutting, because I really, truly believe now with some of the stuff that is going on, both at the federal and state level, is that that may result in even more pressure on your office. So I'd be happy to motion approve.
Anytime my staff gets to come on for hours when we go up the legislature.
Motion approved by Counsel Kane, Counsel DeBona on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you, George, for all the hard work that you've been doing with the veterans. Very, very involved. Somebody reaches out to me, I give you a number, you get back to them. I appreciate all the time and the effort you put into this, because this is a very important matter of veterans. I hate to say this out publicly, I've got to say it, we live in a generation where sometimes these, the veterans are kind of misworked at. And I do publicly say that continuously, that, you know, with what's going on in the world today, that they're being overlooked, that, you know, they put their lives on the line, men and women throughout the United States of America. I'm proud to be up here with you to push that, that these are the people that are doing this. And some people overlook that, and I continuously, with you, will continuously be fighting to keep the legacy going.
Thanks, Counsel. I mean, I feel exactly the same way, I also would have taken this job. I know I'm a gentleman, I pull them in, I start in the work, and I hope to trend this on this process, continues, because the population of veterans in the city, like everywhere, is declining a little bit, but we're reaching more, and I would love for our entire city to watch you closer, saturation of services as I can get. And I give compliments for the job I do, but one of the things, a point I want to make, while I follow the troops and I'm missing you, and thanks for... I don't want the council to lose track of the site, that it's your generosity and your support for the veteran service and budget over the years, and spend so much to improve the quality of life for every select group of citizens in this city. Thank you, my dear man.
Also, also, if I could, Mr. Chairman, when General Dunford came here for the Vietnam Veterans Day a couple of weeks ago, I'll tell you, when they got off that bus and they went over to that flag cabin, and they saw those 400 flags flying, they said, "Thank you for doing this in Quincy, Massachusetts." And we went up to that clock tower for that 30th anniversary, and you know how that feels, right? Right, George?
Well, I've been a part of the Vietnam Veterans Group for as long as I can remember now, but at no time have I ever heard the accolades coming in the way they are for that Thursday, the Vietnam Veterans Association.
It was an unbelievable day. We started at 9:30, the veterans, flexi-veterans hour, and we'd 10 o'clock right outside here with the tombstone and mad coke, and then we went 11 o'clock at the North Quincy High School with the seniors. And then we had 12 o'clock, we had a nice luncheon over at Port 305, and then we had the flyover of what, 201?
204 points, 204 and 150.
And then we had a great ceremony. And I thank you, I thank, you know, Thomas Melinda and Larry Norton for putting that on, and you guys, who is...
Those two deserve all the credit for that. I'm happy to be in a position that I can support them when they need it to make this thing work, and it speaks for itself, that it did. But I mentioned one little footnote to that before I get out of here. The man that we stayed at the Black Lives Center to receive a Medal of Honor this month has traveled around the country, and he's been invited to a number of places. And we were talking over the Imperial Act, and the ceremonies were over. He said, "Never in his life, and nowhere in this country, has he seen anything of the scale of dedication and commitment that City of Quincy shows to its veterans." And he said, "You realize, not just Vietnam veterans, but overall." He said, "This place, there's actual words to it, this is like veterans' inheritance." He said, "Well, thank me, thank the mayor, thank the city." That's the way we are.
I have to thank the mayor as well. He's done a great job with doing for the Vietnam veterans, as well as Paul Booby, the commander of our Sons of American Legion at Marsete Post 294. When we had him, he came up to this line, I said, "I'm going to talk to George a little bit about this and talk to the public about how important it is and the veteran services that if you know of that that needs some help and assistance and guidance, please call." So, if anybody listening, please, George is here, and he's here to help you. And some of the people think, "No, I don't qualify for that." It's better to just give your call and see if you do or you don't.
That's what I'm talking about. There's a lot of misinformation out there, and I tell everybody, will they come in the office and be able to help them or not? If you hear something, confirm it with my office, so you know it's true.
Thank you, George. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Tremendous, tremendous work, George, you know. I mean, the opportunity isn't observed, and you kind of watch, you know, your department in action. That's pretty special.
More delay will be subject to the legislature. Very, very efficient officers going over.
Very special job to help a lot of people, so thank you for all that you do. Motion made by Counsel Finn. Madam Clark, if you please call her off.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeann.
Yes.
Chairman Paul.
Yes. The members voting in the affirmative. Thank you, George.
Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is our legal eagle, Counsel Timmons, in the law office. Welcome, Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, councilors, good evening. I'm generally brief anyways, but particularly this evening, I can be brief. My law department budget that's for you is consistent with the other budgets that the mayor submitted, and that we're essentially level funded. There's some pay raise numbers that you're going to be kind enough to consider, I believe. But beyond that, we've kept our operation consistent with how it has been in prior years, meaning the expenditure for outside counsel, professional and tech, those are the two biggest numbers, precisely the same as they've been prior years. So, absent any questions, that's clearly always the same up in the law office.
Motion approved by Counsel Finn. Any discussion on the motion, Counsel Leeann?
Thank you. I just have a quick question on the professional and tech, so that that would be on this line, and it isn't here. We went from thirty-five thousand to two-hundred, thirty thousand last year, and we're going back up to thirty-five thousand this year. Is there a reasonable amount?
Mr. Question, what is that?
For the professional and tech line?
Right.
We went from thirty-five thousand in 2016 to thirty thousand last year, and back up now to thirty-five thousand?
Well, it was cut one year, and, you know, honestly, I didn't agree with the cut, but the cut was made. And this year, we're coming back with the same number that we've had in prior years, primarily because there's a lot of activity this year where we're expecting to be using appraisers. There are some highway projects that we're undertaking, where we're working with Mass Highway, and any easements, and we already know of one project where there'll be a couple of easements we have to pursue, require appraisal work. So, that's the primary reason why you've asked to restore it to about thirty-five thousand dollars.
So, you are anticipating that you would go over thirty, if you would have kept on thirty this year?
Yes. This year, I know that I've had to hold a couple of bills that normally get paid through that account, and I was going to wait until June in the event that I... Some of the work would have to be done over the summer, but this year, on our professional and tech line, yes, we're on pace to be at about the thirty-five amount. And I know I have some pending request projects that I have to deal with, where I'll be going into that account to pay the individuals involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Counsel Timmons? Motion for approval by Counsel Finn. Madam Clark, if you please call her off.
Counsel Leeann.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeann.
Yes.
Chairman Paul.
Yes. The members voting in the affirmative. If it passes, next item on the agenda, also Counsel Timmons, is the judgment account.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The judgments account has undergone a couple of changes over the past two years. First of all, the DOR reviewed how we've been traditionally operating and advised that a change was in order. Traditionally, we just budgeted one amount for judgments and settlements. That amount was two hundred thousand dollars. DOR advised that it would be more proper bookkeeping and consistent with the general laws if we split them, because they didn't want us using the discretionary settlement money out of the judgment account. So, we've done that. Went through the experience last year for the first time. Every year prior, while I've been the solicitor, I've asked the mayor to consider an increase in this account, because we get involved in situations where every year around this time, we're out of money. And we're out of money to pay types of settlement accounts that I know that many of you are aware of. Snow and ice claims, pot hole claims, things that occur over the course of the year. I was back in January after we requested appropriation, because we were out of money on that account. Yet, we got a number of claims. So, in talking with the mayor, this account is similar to the snow and ice account in that you can't always predict or foretell what's going to happen. But one of the things that we're trying to do here is by having a settlement account that I believe is more realistic, we can resolve matters before they become claims that result in judgments. And we can also timely pay the types of claims that you wind up paying phone calls on. I know another one presented to me today where there's a woman who's very upset over a pot hole claim and how it was handled, and that's because the claim is denied. But we're looking at it, and sometimes these are the types of things that you have to take into account, a number of factors when you're dealing with the public. So, we believe that this is a prudent adjustment in the account. I'd ask that you approve it going forward, because the settlement account is probably the most critical account in the office overseas.
Motion.
Motion for approval on the motion, Counsel Finn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to check in relation to this, and again, I see you did come back for the appropriation related to settlements. And of course, I hear the data and stuff shows us that you have about twenty-four thousand of that remaining, but you expect to be through that and over, or that's going to continue to be a problem in the next two months if we go forward?
Oh, I'll definitely be through it. We could be... We could have paid a number of claims already. What I'm trying to do is get as far into the month of May as I can, so I can see what's coming out by year end, and then at that point, we'll pay claims. We've got a number of them all queued up, we've got the easement himself.
Thank you.
Further questions for Mr. Timmons? See, no more for our move approval by Counsel Hughes. Madam Clark, if you please call her off.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeann.
Yes.
Chairman Paul.
Yes. The members voting in the affirmative. Thank you, Mr. Timmons. Yeah, sorry, one more.
One more. The final account is workers' compensation. This is another account that's a little different, rather difficult to foretell what's going to happen this year, but we're coming back level funded, as I've done in prior years. I really have to praise the work of attorney Mike Maxey, some of whom know him. He really does an excellent job. He's very, very experienced in workers' comp, and since day one, he's managed that... Managed the claims, managed the interaction with municipal employees, and he's really done a first-class job. And then Lorna Potter, who's in our office, she does the administrative stuff. So, this is an area where, although it's difficult to know, because one fire incident where firefighters are injured, or some of the weather-related events that occur that bring public works, folks out, bad weather, those can really be budget busts, but things have been being pretty well, and we're staying with a level-funded approach. So, it's really all I have to say on workers' comp.
Motion for approval, Counsel Hughes. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Clark, if you please call her off.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeann. Chairman Paul.
Yes.
Seven members voting in the affirmative. Passes. Thank you, Counsel Timmons.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Counsels, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Human Resources Department. Lieutenant Mr. Murphy, call him.
Thank you, Counsel.
Motion for approval on the move approval. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel DeBona?
Mr. Chairman, it looks like it's just level funded. It doesn't look like there's any increasing anything on that.
Correct.
Looks good to me. Thank you.
Any further questions, Lieutenant Mr. Murphy? See, Madam Clark, yes, Counsel Finn?
Thank you. Just a quick question. What's the breakout between how much you're paying medical insurance for current employees versus retirees?
Let me see. I actually have to go and add that up, but I would say that the... It's about, we pay about eight point three million for the enhanced plans, the retiree, the medic enhanced plans. And then the balance is really...
All current employees?
Yeah, so it's a good number.
There are some good numbers. Yeah, just curious, and, you know, I don't know if you're here earlier, but just asking basically, you know, if we look into how to pare this down with whatever plans we're kind of working with, setting up new bids or...
We will be looking at it.
Reaching contributions.
We will be looking... We are going to negotiate with the PEC, which is the Public Employees Committee that discusses the rates. This year, we went to fifteen percent. Employees pay fifteen percent, the city pays eighty-five percent. And with the retire rate, it's always been split at twenty-five, seventy-five. I'm not suggesting for a moment that that's going to change, but I mean, certainly, the PEC agreement expires in June.
Okay. Thanks, Ellen.
Counsel, Counsel Finn?
Did we both have a primary question?
Yes.
No, it's a... So, what will we discuss in health insurance?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. All right. You've... I'm so excited.
Any discussion for Helen on human resources? All right, there's been a motion made. Madam Clark, if you please call her off.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Leeann.
Yes.
Chairman Paul.
Yes. The members voting in the affirmative?
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is health insurance.
Sorry, Mike.
Very cool.
Yeah, I was focused. And again, this is last year. This was one of the areas we did have. And I got to be honest with everyone. I go with fear and trembling in terms of everything, in terms of the uncertain nature of many things that are going to happen, particularly around health insurance, because we just don't know, right? Sorry. But as I understand, from what the auditors, the name of the chair, this is what the actuals, that we are working to get about a million dollar, potentially a million dollar surplus, it's going to be happening.
Is that accurate? We do tend to run a little behind in dental, and we probably haven't got another seven to seven point two to pay out health, but there's definitely some leverage in there. Although we did have, you know, I should point out that really, when we're budgeting, when we prepare our projections, we're doing it based on the numbers for that current year, for the future year. And as you know, from GIC, there were a number of plan redesigns, which caused a chunk of people to go from one plan to another and move within some... Move within Harvard, now a lot of you went into Harvard, now they can move within.
Well, that brings me to a larger question, and I hope the answer to this is yes, but given changing circumstances, is there any tendency on the, particularly on the part of the executive branch here of the mayor's office, to think about moving outside of GIC in terms of this point?
Yes, absolutely, Counsel. What we've done is requested from GIC, again, our agreement expires in June of eighteen thirties of eighteen. If we ought to leave GIC, we have to notify them this coming December. So, we've already requested our claims experience from the GIC.
In order to go out on the market.
Right, to prepare the documents, let us know if we're going to have any... You know, if we think that we're going to have an opportunity to go out, and we're just going to... The door will be shut, the press shut for us, and we won't have an opportunity. But we're working towards providing that, and then we'll again be with the PEC, the Public Employees Committee, and negotiate as we move forward.
And at this point, in terms of the 2018 request, it is almost from a sense of purpose, level funded. It's significant, a little bit. Well, it's about seven hundred thousand in relation to that. But...
And we think, well, not more of an opportunity, since it's slowed down quite a bit, that they have to jump in and around plans. And we have, you know, when they set the rates, when GIC set the rates this past March, they did a number of, once again, plan designs, plan design changes to really lessen the severity of the increases, of the rate increase. They did some deductibles, rose from three hundred for individuals, six hundred for families, to five hundred and a thousand dollars for family primary care offices.
You don't have to, like, believe me, I'm all familiar with the deductibles.
It's definitely dramatic. Harvesty, definitely.
Breaking, broken athletes to the emergency room or whatever, but...
Harvard itself only went up about a percentage, and the medical harvest went down three point seven.
The bottom line that I'm really concerned about, one, I'm excited possibly going back out on the market. I think that that's very wise. Of course, I just wanted to suggest that we do that prior to GIC, because I'm going to be over reviewing my history here. But again, I think that that's... And I'll tell you, there's a part of me that when I look at this particular, you know, surplus that could be coming in, my... I'm fighting every instinct to cut it, to be honest with you. But to be honest, I mean, I'm just, the level of uncertainty right now is being created.
And that's why it is so tight, the increases here, and so it's such a small recastment increase, because we've looked at those other items that would offset or lessen the severity.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Quick question, Lieutenant Mr. Murphy? I'm listening to, like, sequencing, right? So, we're in the GIC, we're going to engage in a conversation called mentally June. This budget goes effective seven one, right?
Correct.
That's fiscal year 2018. So, if you did make a move to, say, private insurance outside of that group insurance commission, what would that mean for this budget, or is it completely...
Not yet, it would be for the fiscal year nineteen. The contract expires June thirtieth of eighteen. We have to notify them in December if we expect to leave, and that's, we would have to have something in place to go to by this coming December.
This is basically going to take us through the next fiscal year, equitably, and then we'll look to potentially make a move.
Definitely. The plan will last through... Our GIC plan will last through June thirtieth, nineteen eighteen, 2018.
Any further questions for Counsel DeBona?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Ellen. I appreciate it. This is a tough category, because I want to ask you some questions. Just, are these prices driven by national, global situations, I guess I could say? Because healthcare...
I'm certainly no expert in this field, but I can tell you that I do think Massachusetts is historically a better place with health insurance plans overall, certainly the facilities that you have, the treatment facilities, but as far as some of these pieces that are in GIC that people are talking about across the country, or, excuse me, with health insurance across the country, has been, it's just in Massachusetts, whether it's coverage up until 26, and some of these different things, so I think it's proven to be, you know, maybe the territorial administrations or the government of Massachusetts, who I think we're in a better place, and certainly deductibles, no Indiana, the five, six, seven, eight thousand dollars you see across the country.
So we're pretty good with what kind of coverage that city employee can get?
I think we're very fortunate, the city does have some great plans in the GIC, whether it's Harvard, some Medicare, some other plans, so we're very generous with that, I think.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you so much.
And I think with the GIC, isn't it always just subject to everyone else's liability, for lack of a better word? So whatever city and town anticipates a group insurance program, whatever their sick pool looks like when the actuaries run their calculations, we could be, you know, the top end of the scale, the healthiest in that, in the actual thing, but subject to liabilities of another city and town, right, wrong, and different...
It is all pools, correct, but that's why when we have requested, as I say, our claims experiences, so we'll know exactly what Quincy's paying. Again, you only get to seek that one time in the contract with GIC, so we've just requested to get the most updated ones that we can, so that we can run this information and see, can we go to another insurer, or are we better off staying in GIC right now? So we'll know that better and what's...
In terms of the condition as a participant, as a municipality participating in that plan, that you can only request that data once?
Yeah.
Wow.
Interesting.
That is very interesting.
There is some fear, is there not, also in terms of, GIC is expressed, as put in physicians on various healthcare providers that could radically or dramatically change people's access to certain networks? Isn't that also one of the issues that's handling that?
I think, again, when GIC opts to make these decisions to set the rates, so when they change, like when they went from the PPO with hybrid pill, to the POS, appointment service, no longer self-refering, you know, just they need a primary deposition, that's when I think we saw the big shift, I know from that, we saw the big shift to the UNICARE, which is the PPO, so that I can, like, like myself, I can self-diagnose, self-prefer. So, you know, that gives me the opportunity to do that versus if you're kind of stuck with them network, stuck with every single provider.
Thank you.
Counsel Fenn? That's a motion for approval.
Motion for approval.
Counsel DeBona, anyone else? Further discussion on the motion, there's a motion for approval. Madam Clark, if you would please call the roll.
Counsel King.
Yes.
Counsel Bond.
Yes.
Counsel Finn.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Lee.
Yes.
Counsel Forrest.
Yes.
Counsel Lee.